We have a joint budget workshop today, so why don't we go ahead and call that meeting to order? So if I could please have a, I'm gonna call, get all these acronyms here. City Council, successor agency, housing authority, industrial development authority, Palmdale Airport Authority, Palmdale Civic Authority, the Palmdale Finance Authority. Go order this. Could I get a joint roll call, please?
Mayor Vice Chair Ledford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tim Corillo.
Here.
Councilmember, member director, Commissioner Hoffbauer.
Here.
Benton Court.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Chalakian.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Item three, joint budget workshop and discussion of the city Palmdale's, city council, well, I'll not go through all that. Jim Purte, give you the floor.
Mr. Mayor, staff's excited to be here this evening to present this budget workshop, where we will walk through proposals for this year 2018-19 budget. I'm gonna be taking the first few slides to then give a summary and overview of where we've been and where we're headed, and responses to the council's direction, both from our survey and from prior workshops. So with that, we can move on to the next slide. Maybe?
That's my message. You said it.
There we go. So our budget goals have been and continue to be fiscal sustainability, quality of service, being balanced, our operating expenses with operating revenue, adequate reserves, address the challenges that are facing the city, align cities finances with a strategic plan. The next page is the strategic plan, I won't go through every item, but the three main items, sustainable community, sustainable economy, and sustainable organization, and all the elements that fall within that are how we take a look at our budget, how each department and division looks at their budget, their accomplishments, and their proposals for next year, they all fit within the strategic plan. So council budget priorities, we surveyed the council, and also from discussions at the various workshops in the past, number one continues to be public safety and security, followed by economic development, completion of existing parks, park safety, infrastructure and streets, and nuisance abatement. And so those are the top six that came out of our survey of the council. And so in response to that, let me flip to the next, there we go. Our fiscal year 2018-19 budget highlights, staff will be presenting items in detail that fall within each department, but some of the highlights that we think address where the council wanted us to go, certainly a big highlight for this city is the substantial amount of CIP projects citywide, about $128.5 million. That's significant for cities three and four times our size, and so it's really an accomplishment by our public works staff, not only to carry out that many projects, but also to have a big hand in bringing that money into the city. It's twice what the general fund budget is, and so that's important to note that although our general fund, we live on taxes, property tax, and sales tax mostly, and then our fees and charges and so forth, we're also bringing in, utilizing funding from the feds, the state, and so forth, to make improvements citywide. Next, invest in our public works maintenance, this is the landscape maintenance districts, the parks, city facilities, and streets, and so a lot of these capital projects, as well as, you'll see, as we get into this, staffing and other resources will be applied toward investment in improving our maintenance across the city. Address safety at city facilities, this has been an ongoing concern, and we have budgeted and continue to budget to add more safety facilities, such as camera, and some other safety items at all our facilities. Upgrade the IT network and the telephone system, telephone system is pretty out of date and is gonna be out of service soon enough, we need to update that to a voice-over-IP system. And then improve wireless access at city facilities is also critical. Next page, automating the city council agenda management. So one of the reasons we're here is for changes that are being made to the council chambers, and those include changes to broadcast gas system, as well as the dais countertop, to make technology more accessible to the council, and potentially change the way we distribute agendas and manage the meetings. So we'll be working on that for the next three months. Enhance economic development and marketing programs, you'll hear about some of the things that we're doing with our marketing consultants and sponsorship consultants and so forth, to really push our communications to the community and our economic development activities to the next level. Add new park programs and events, so we've added programming, we've moved staff from some areas over this past year, and putting them into more park programs, and then adding events, including for the first time in a long time, a fireworks show on June 30th at Murray Grove Park. Focusing on staff development and skill building, we're still operating, not quite half the staff we used to, we can't make that claim anymore because we are building up our staffing, but it's critical that all our staff are operating at high efficiency and really high skill levels to provide the best level of service to the public. Upgrading our emergency operations center and staff preparedness, so this past year we've hired our emergency operations center staff person, and she is on all of us to make sure that we are FEMA certified, and we're putting together our roles, should an emergency happen, everyone knows or will know where they need to be, what their responsibilities are, and then the operations in the center itself will be improved by the assets that we'll be adding there. Implement the Measure H homeless plan, so Measure H is new funding, that shouldn't go, maybe it's not here, it's going. The Measure H homeless plan, so Measure H funding has come to the city, and we have developed a homeless plan that we'll be bringing forward to the city council, I think in June, and that will lay out our strategy for addressing homelessness in Palmdale, and partnering with the rest of the Alamo Valley and the county to address this critical issue. And then developing Measure A strategies for parks, I think this is really important. In the past, when we had funding for parks where we did bond issuance and made significant park capital improvements, we had a citizens committee to make those, help make those decisions. We did that in a small way, I guess if 150 people showing up is small, but at Masari Park, it was kind of a pilot, where we really brought in community input into what they wanted to see in that park, and then utilized that input to move forward. And so as the Measure A funding comes through, we think it's important to develop a parks committee that will help us update our parks master plan, and that also is important going into the general plan update, and then finally give us some direction in regard to how we wanna handle the Measure A funds that will be coming into the city, both for maintenance and for potential capital needs. We think that in a lot of areas, we're gonna be very competitive for the competitive portion of Measure A, not just the performative portion under the city. So with that, we're looking, or proposing to move forward with 14 new positions, actually 15, but one will be going away, so we're netting out 14 positions going forward. We, last year, added 12 positions, and so these positions are very important in regard to dealing with the maintenance and other issues that we brought up in those prior two slides. Karen, you have the breakdown of?
So of the positions that are being added, seven will be added to make them improve to address the previous discussions that we've had about maintaining what we, maintain what we have. We have two positions that will be allocated, or the proposal, to economic and community development, three to neighborhood services, two in recreation and culture, and one in public works project management. In addition to that, there will be, there are three part-time staff positions proposed in this budget as well.
Those maintenance positions, are those new positions, or some of those backfilled? Because I understand we got like a couple of folks over there at Public Works that are retiring this week, through the striking and painting and stuff like that.
None of these are backfilled positions, these are all new positions. Any position, with the exception of, I think, with the exception of clerical positions, I think we had one that, a custodian that retired, those per a contract with the union, we are not replacing those custodian positions, and that work is being contracted out, but all of the seven positions are new positions. So any vacancy created by the retirements, those positions will also be filled, or they're budgeted positions and will be recruited for.
Are those gonna be from the general fund positions or different sources?
There's about seven that are general fund, the new positions, there's about 7.95 that will be paid out of general fund, the rest, 705, will be paid out of special revenue funds. So just, just partial.
The custodial that we're gonna be contracting, where's that gonna be for?
We currently have a custodial contract, these are for the city facilities, and so any position, any, we only have, we have just a small number of custodial staff positions, and so that work will be added to the contract work.
I just want to say, I think it's amazing that this city is running off 198 employees this shock of a week, that there's so few, so yeah, I think it's time.
The reason I'm asking the custodial questions is because I know this has been an issue for Laura as well, but I don't, I don't think that the contract service people, they don't take the same level of ownership as our guys do, and, and I, you can see that, you know, like, just little things around city hall, and you go over like to the transportation center, and you know, again, if you're not watching, nothing happens over there, you know? So I just, I have some concerns about doing that, because you don't have, I mean, we have to call somebody supervisor, and he has to call some guy at the food chain, it's gotta roll down the other side, before, you know, we lose a certain amount of control or we start contracting.
It takes a person on our staff's behalf to stay on top of these guys and make sure that they're performing their, so, their services, if they're not being watched, so.
But that speaks to whether your contract or in-house, gotta have supervision.
So to somewhat address your concern, two of the positions that are being proposed for maintenance, one is in facilities, and one is going to be in transit services. That will be doing some of the monitoring with contract labor at the facilities, but also being, working on site and working with those facilities to make sure that some of those issues are addressed, that we're able to monitor that more closely. Additionally, staff in public works and maintenance and finance are working together to kind of look at our contracting model, look at our contracts, make sure that we have appropriate compliance language in the contract, so that we can hold the contractors more accountable, and that we can have clear mechanisms.
You should have some sort of performance metrics, so.
Yeah.
I don't wanna belabor the issue, but.
One of the projects we did with One More Cities is to work with them to go toward performance-based contracting, and so we've got a connection with 100 other cities that are involved with that program, and many of those have done performance-based, so we'll have a lot of templates to use as we go forward with contracting.
Are those contracts, if there's performance-based elements, do they get renewed, do they get reviewed like every year? Say the contract is for three years, there's an opportunity to review their performance in a year, and if they don't work out, is there provisions there to go for another contract?
Those are all, I think, things that we're looking into. Staff certainly do meet with the contractor more regularly than just annually, to address and identify issues and address those needs. So we're just looking at, you know, how can we improve our contract language to make sure that the scope of work and the program objectives are clear, that the performance objectives are clear, and that there's ways to hold accountability if that performance doesn't meet the city's standards.
I know the city attorney doesn't like the word liquidated damages or the words liquidated damages, but we will look at avenues to make sure that we have a hammer, working with the contractors to get what we need of.
Since we're asking questions, I'd like to go back, is it okay to ask questions on previous workshop slides? I know that this is just a workshop, and one of the slides you have add new park programs and events. I understand that this is just the review, have you put any thought into how to approach this, Mr. Purte?
In regard to additional events?
Yes, park programs and events, yeah.
Yeah, I think part of it is going to be surveying the community, I know with our Thursday night concert program, we've gone out, kind of ad hoc, gone out on top of the community to ask what they wanted, and we're adding additional items, activities for kids and things like that, based on the response we're getting, but I think that we need to formalize that and do a better job sending the staff out there that are working the event, also get them out there with a clipboard, talking to people, and get more feedback. What we see is, particularly for that event, and our Colitas Hill event, another one, those are growing more kind of organically over the next few years through public input, so that we're not sitting in our staff offices trying to figure out what's, what's a good component.
So there's a budgeted amount for events?
Yes.
Okay, so you're looking at increasing that budget amount then?
Yes.
Okay. And I like the idea of having the community input, to see what it is that the community wants. The other one is the Measure A strategies for parks, again, I know this is just a workshop, but I just wanted to know if you had any ideas of how to address that as far as when the money becomes available? We've talked about a couple of ideas, I know it may be premature, but do you see an opportunity to have another workshop to see how this is gonna be?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think what we have right now, we've budgeted the maintenance component for one of the maintenance staff dedicated solely to parks, and so Measure A funding will pay for maintenance staff that works on parks and receive any county funding, which is probably about 90% of our parks in the city, so we're pretty good there. And then with the capital money, to be competitive for the grants, and also to, I think, to make good decisions in regard to, do we go out for a bond issue, do we use some of that annual income to issue bonds, do more park expansion, that also comes with an operational cost, so we have to figure that part out. But leaving up the community, do they wanna see step-by-step improvements to specific parks, or do we wanna see large expansions in some areas that may be deficient? So I think Parks Committee is gonna be probably where we're headed on that. Have you put any thought into, you know, who's gonna serve on that committee? I would assume it's planning commissioners, council members, and then members of the public, so we have a good cross-section of people across the city, park users, and people that are near parks, to see really what they want and what we can provide.
Okay. The last question, the Park Committee, are you anticipating that happening maybe like after the budget is approved, or after we figure out what to do with the Measure A funds?
I think a little bit of both, maybe after November, maybe when, when solution, or maybe before November, depending on how we wanna get involved with the committee over the summer. I think we've got a really good outreach platform with our park users and so forth, that we could do pretty good outreach and put a committee together relatively quickly. Our last committee that we formed took a little too long, so hopefully we can do better on the parks.
Thank you. All right. Moving on.
So at this one, I'm gonna turn it over to Karen, it's about numbers, and we'll start moving through our forecasts, and then get into the budget specifics, and I know each of the staff is ready to go to come up there and present their information on their accomplishments and proposals for next year.
Thank you. Just to remind you, our budget balancing strategies continue to be use one-time funding for one-time expenses, and increasing our general fund reserves, or invested in, investing in areas that generate revenue. We also, we continue to build up our reserve levels that provide for future economic uncertainties, disaster, capital replacement, and sustainability. We also continue to recommend an operating general fund reserve policy of 20% with a goal of 30%. And as you'll see when we look at our projections, we are able to maintain a 30% operating reserve for at least four years out of next year's budget. So I, the next three slides, I'm dividing the projections up to three different areas. The first one will show you our projections for operating revenues and expenses. This is the operating cost to maintain the current operation levels, and we start with, finishing up this year, our projections for 1718, the 1819 projections, and then we project out five years. The next slide will show you just the one-time impacts. These are revenues and expenses that only, we project only to hit in one year, and do not project them to hit as on an ongoing basis, because we continue to use the approach of funding one-time expenses with one-time revenues.
So I think a couple things to point out here. One, the law enforcement component has now grown larger than the rest of the city combined as far as the general fund piece for personnel, and so that's, that's significant. We do put into the budget both the additional staff that are gonna be funded, or proposed to be funded with general fund money, and we also include a cost living adjustment going forward, at least for the, for the next four years.
Do you have liability trust fund?
The law enforcement includes the, a conservative projection on both the sheriff's costs and on the liability trust fund. This year was a half percent, because we voted to hold it down, but we're projecting a larger increase in the future of the liability trust fund. And probably our biggest hit on the personnel side is the PERS increase, which is putting a lot of cities in jeopardy, but we're still able to absorb that, and you look at the end of, you know, since we're five to six years out, we've got an imbalance there, but when you look at our revenue side, we are not including any potential housing starts over the next four years or five years. We're only including information on projects that we have in the pipeline, and so we're being very conservative, and this is a living document that changes almost day-to-day, but certainly month-to-month, and so each time we bring this back, it's gonna look a little bit different. If the economy and the housing and so forth moves forward like we're anticipating, we're not very worried with the numbers we're looking at for five years out.
What are the other potential revenue sources other than housing starts? Because we know that we're challenged there with the banking industry being extremely cautious about their lending practices out here at this point for new housing starts.
So we have not programmed in hotels unless we have them in the pipeline, and so we know that there's several more hotels in the pipeline in kind of the preliminary process, and so we have programmed in TOD or any one-time money, permits on those. We've programmed a small amount right now for leased out of our 18,000 streetlights that we now own, so once we convert those, we've had conversations with a few telecoms in regard to leases, we've programmed some money in based on these initial conversations. We feel that we're going to see quite a bit more activity in that area. And then we've programmed a small amount for waste management tonnage, because the planning commission approved an increase in tonnage, that can be a significant revenue generator going forward. We've figured out some of that a few years out, they still have to get some approvals, and so we haven't programmed all that in, but that can be easily another $1 million a year.
And of course you got a power plant, there's $25 million waiting for us.
We have a power plant, that's plenty, yeah.
What time is it? Five thirty, the power plant's on the table.
Well, it just, 30 P A.
Interesting, I want to see.
Yeah, they do.
So I would suggest that maybe we start taking the power plant more serious, is all I'm saying. Maybe there's ways to enhance our ability to move that project, because it could certainly put us in a great financial position.
I agree, can we, can we get an update on that later on?
Certainly. We have a meeting scheduled with Summit and the new director of sustainable energy for the county of Los Angeles that's coming up, so we can, we'll be sitting down with them so that Summit can lay out their whole proposal. The power plant last week received its approval from EPA on the final hurdle of their environmental, so that's, that's complete, and we're also working with Summit High Speed Rail in regard to transmission lines, for them to partner up on the transmission lines down the high-speed rail right of way, rather than kind of a meandering proposal that they had, seems like across the valley in a way. And so those things are definitely positive moves in regard to the power plants. The entire thing now hinges on a power purchase agreement, and we're hoping that this meeting with LA County, where we can lay the cards on the table with Summit and show just how important this power plant is to the region, to the fifth district, and gain support there, because the green energy does not work without these peaker plants.
So last time we had the workshop, I do recall that if everything went according to plan, they could start building by the end of this year? Because they, when they obtain the permit, which will be now, then they could potentially start building, was it at the end of this year?
October. October is what we were told.
October this year?
That's what we were told.
Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, but I, at this point, it's a billion-dollar project, and so I wouldn't say the power purchase agreement is a year from, from that really, so until they get that agreement, you know, they're kind of in limbo, they're not gonna pull the trigger on getting contracts and so forth and so on.
No way they're gonna start constructing without a power purchase.
They gotta have that, to get the investors involved, it's a, it's a big, big project.
So how long would it take for them to secure the power purchase agreement once we make a decision?
Well, I think that's the area we might wanna, not that we need to invent or reinvent anything, all I'm saying is if we focus, try to make that a reality, then maybe we'll see a different timeline, or maybe opportunities that we haven't realized today. I just think we need to take it more serious, that's all, and really do everything we can to make it happen. It's a substantial investment, and we need to realize it.
Well, I'm, I'm still waiting for them to come meet with us, because a year or more ago, we had said, we need to have Summit here, so we can all hear the same information at the same time from Summit. I haven't seen him, so.
I'd be happy to set a workshop, especially after we have a meeting with, with the county, it will be a lot further along in regard to how that feels, and then bring them forward for a workshop and potentially revolve that.
Yeah, I wanna take it serious as well, but I wanna, I'm not, I gotta hear it from them, you know?
Absolutely.
We had a workshop last year, so we should probably have another one. So acceptance or clearance?
Yeah, July, the U C is gonna rule in regard to the prior Edison contracts, and whether those are gonna get charged to CCAs. That's the million-dollar question right there in regard to, do CCAs really save money? Because if the prior solar contracts, if Edison was forced to purchase, get added on to CCAs, we're not having to pick up that weight from those old contracts, that margin of savings starts to disappear, and so that's why I've been waiting till after this July ruling to really make a move on any of this, and any numbers that we have up to this point don't include that major impact.
Would just add on a few things from what Jim told you. With all of that included in our 1819 budget, we are, we are still able to show a positive outlook, but we're still cautious. We do continue to use a conservative approach, like Jim said. We are showing, we are showing deficits when we get to 2122, but we have plenty of time to address all the activities that are in play right now. We'll know better in a couple years on when they will be, when they will truly impact our budgets. We are seeing right now, or what I'm projecting right now, the revenues on an average from the years you see there, they, they are increasing average of four, a four... the years you see there, they, they are increasing an average of 4.3%. So that's why we're, we have a little bit of a gap there. And once all these other activities that Jim is working on kicks in, we feel confident that we'll be able to start meeting the deficits as we, as we go forward. I know you already mentioned the personnel costs, but just to give you an idea going forward on some of the assumptions that we did use, we did not add any new positions starting in 1920 forward. It does include a 2% COLA. And then our PERS impact, it starts out around 26% and it gets over 40% when we get to 2324. And as Jim pointed out, our personnel costs and law enforcement costs, they make up almost two-thirds of our operating budget. And those are the, when things change in those areas, you can see that it can have a pretty big impact to the city's operating, general fund operating budget. The law enforcement, Jim, I did include a 2% liability increase in one year in 1920 because since we got a little bit of a break in, or not break, but we did get, it was only a half a percent increase in 1819. I did increase it in 1920 of 2%. And then I'm using an average of 4% on the contract going forward. So it's, and only a half a percent after that first year for liability.
In last year's budget, we included deputies, additional deputies, the projection going forward. Are those still in there?
They are not.
So those have been removed. The reason those have been removed is because the sheriff's department is telling us, it doesn't matter how many people you add, you're not getting any new bodies. They're at about 1,100 deficit right now, sheriff's department wide. We're about 18 short at Palmville Station. And that's better than it was last year, about 27 short. And those minutes are getting made up by overtime that deputies are serving. A lot of times, they don't have a choice in the matter. They're being drafted to serve that. And so to add minutes, to add additional bodies would just add to the burden of these deputies. A few weeks ago, I went down to the board of supervisors' office and testified, really be out on behalf of the North County stations, which represent 25% of the sheriff's department budget in regard to, you know, our dissatisfaction, but also some recommendations in regard to improving recruiting and recruiting here in the Yellow Valley where their largest pool of applicants are at. And so I think we're going to see some changes there. Of course, the first thing they did was commission a study. We can, we can study this stuff until we're dead, but I think that they got the idea that, you know, study is great, but do something now while you're studying the project.
Historically, when you can't meet your contractual numbers, it affects our crime rate, historically. Go back in time and look at it, and this overtime just takes its toll, that's all.
Well, it's one of the things that we have, that very discussion about the way the fatigue and the overtime factors play in to the, you know, to, to some of the liability issues that occur. You start pushing 14, 15 hours and doing that a couple of times a month without the ability to properly rehab in between there, you know, you can, things can happen. I do appreciate though, the other day we were having a legislative committee meeting and the sheriff's department was commenting on that factor that the vast majority of their applicants are coming from the Antelope Valley. But that their challenge is testing and at which point I picked up the other phone and called Mr. Partee and said, we've got, we've got to be able to handle this. And I appreciate the fact that, that you allowed me to go back and tell them, hey, you guys need to, we can, we can easily, we can easily put them right here. We can put them at Legacy Commons. We've got several places we can do it. There's no, no reason why. And the same time Lancaster also said, you know, they can make fairground facilities available. The sheriff's got, you know, sheriff's got several options now so that, that issue of, well, you know, we can't have testing and recruitment in the area where most of our applicants come from is not, should not be an issue now.
I submit, you also have this workshop center itself. That's what they do. I think they should lend a hand in helping streamline that process.
They're pretty proprietary over there though. We talked about.
If they work for us, we can unproprietary them.
Yeah, well, good luck.
I mean, you know, we talked about this in the past. Should we increase or maybe use some of those funds to try to increase public safety officers, stuff like that on RBF? If the sheriff's department can't help us meet some of these needs, can we, for the lower staff, can we beef up our public safety department?
I think that's one of the things we can look at. And certainly we had proposals from neighborhood services in regard to adding staff in those areas. But the caveat was also the trade-offs right now. The budget I have or am proposing goes more toward park maintenance, putting more staffing in the parks, not necessarily toward the PSO portion. But we could certainly take a look at that if that's the council's direction.
Well, one of the things that we've broken down in, I'm doing the council academy right now with the sheriff's department, and we were breaking down some of these various costs. And the numbers range anywhere, you know, for the additional deputy, between 250 and $480,000 depending on whether it's a 40-hour or 56-hour no relief, relief or no relief. So a bunch of factors go into that. But they were saying that the CSAs, they call them now because they don't want to call them an officer, you know, can't do that. But, no, no, the community service assistant or something like that. So, but the cost on those, many of them, many of these folks are merely waiting, some of them have something that prevents them physically from becoming a deputy. He said probably about 80% of them are merely in the queue to move up, move, move on up. And I was kind of surprised at, at the, at the cost on those because they were quoting about, I think, 65 or 68,000 dollars a year for a CSA, which is, I think, one of the ways that we can help relieve some of that load from our deputies. Because when I did a ride-along a couple of weeks ago, majority of the time that we were out there was doing stuff that didn't need a cop there. It just needed somebody there to take a report as a missing person.
Same with my ride-along.
Yeah. Somebody's car got broke into last night, you know? So they need that. And, and they don't want to hear, well, you can make, you know, this report online or something like that. A lot of people, it's the biggest tragedy in the world that's ever occurred to them. And they want somebody there to hold their hand, tell them it's going to be okay, write it down for them. A 68,000 dollar a year person can do that just as well as a 450,000 dollar a year person can.
So maybe we should look at adding a couple guys or see what that is.
So in our, in our preliminary budget, we had put in two of those CSAs as part of the program. And then we were told as we were going through the budget discussions and talking to the sheriff's department, we can't get those either. We can't get deputies or these CSAs. They're not providing either. And so we, at that point, dropped that in the budget.
Okay, with them or were you talking about the, the security officer?
It was a security officer.
I think it was the security officer.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so that's a different deal. Those are about 85,000 a year for them. We, we, we drilled down into those numbers. I don't know that the CSAs are, were as difficult for them. So, but maybe we could, I think we should keep it on the table to look at.
Well, also a reminder that we do currently have city community service officers. We have three city community service officers that do that same duty.
That's the ones I'm talking about.
That currently go out and do patrol, take non-workable reports.
Yeah, those guys are great. We had a couple more of those guys, I think it would help.
That's exactly what we did when we had this gentleman before. History repeats itself. And here we are. It's repeating itself here. So we, we beefed up our private side in assistance scenarios that don't require a deputy. Just get us a civilian if we can or somebody that's qualified certain, but not at a 450,000 dollar a year.
Yeah, I don't know, it's fine.
So right now with the, looking at the several years going forward, at least the next three years, there is room in the budget for an ad like that. So if that's the direction of the council, and it sounds like I'm getting consensus to add some more public safety at whatever level that we can achieve, whatever we can get when we actually get a body, that's the important part and.
And whether it's a contracted form or whether we do our in-house guys, like Crumley and those guys, you know, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever's going to be most effective, that's what we're going.
I just think we just need to keep looking at it.
All right.
All right.
Well, the law enforcement contract that, as everybody has been talking about, it is a large portion of our general fund operating budget. The personnel cost included in that too, or what we are anticipating is the impact from PERS increases. Now, I talked about that a little bit, but also what we've done is we, you or you as the council members and management did approve to establish a pension stabilization fund last year. And we are implementing or I have included in the budget going forward, not as much as we approved last year, but some to go forward to continue to fund the pension stabilization fund. So that when we get down the road and we are finding some struggle with funding PERS, we can take, it'll, we can take from that fund and help relieve the general fund some.
And we need to be cautious on the number, the projection on the liability trust fund. That's a little light from what their, what their actuarials, they add them back in there, add the whole row of insurance guys and encounters and, and, you know, all these guys telling us how, you know, the, because we held them at the statutory one-half percent increase on that trust fund. They're insisting it should have been 13.
That's insane.
And that, that, you know, that they're looking at it more. And, you know, one of the messages we kept sending back to them is, look, we don't hire, we don't fire, we don't set up discipline, we have minimal input into the operational aspect of what these guys do on a day-to-day basis. The county sets that. Maybe the county needs to be picking up a portion of that additional liability because a number of these items, when we sit down there and we look at the scenario and the background information that comes in as a result of these things, we're sitting there going, hell did the city have to do with this? This was county policy that, that resulted in this ultimate incident or is a training issue that we have no input into.
If they had skin in the game, they might change.
So that, yeah, but there's a, there's a problem with, there's a state, state law that says that we have to, that we have to cover, provide cost recovery to them.
There's definitely a gap in responsibility.
But we got it, we, I think that's, that's what it comes down to, is when they start writing all these lines down and saying, this is what this costs, this is what that costs, this is what the other thing costs, I think we need to take a closer look at that, so.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think we sent a message when we shook up the committee and headed some new.
Well, they were not happy with all the extra people down there.
And so I think that put a message across, the fact that we held them to the half percent this year because we were starting to see a trend shift where some of these huge cases had just gone through the system and then we're seeing some let up on the other side. And the actuaries wanted to keep going this way and we're, well, wait a minute, it looks like it's starting to stabilize and even go the other way. And so let's take a breather and see what happens over the next year. And so that's why we did the half percent and see if it continues to trend down or that was just a brief pause on the way up Mount Everest, so.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so this is.
Let me, let me throw one more thing and then in regard to, when I spoke to the board of supervisors, one of the points I made was the fact that the city last year experienced its lowest crime rate in history. This year, we're in great shape, down about 11% so far. And that this issue of staffing is one thing that could, you know, start to reverse that trend. And I think that's very important to know that we're safer than we've ever been, but we.
Imagine where it could be if we had all the people we needed.
Exactly.
But that's a two-sided sword as well. Certainly the deputies are an important part of that, but it's also engaging our residents and we're very good at it. But we need to continually look to engage them to be part of the solution as well. We can get much better outcome.
Yeah, creating a positive influence is better than just adding more deputies. That goes a lot further.
It's all about the partnership. And I mean, we'll talk a lot about community engagement this evening and we're moving in that direction as well.
Okay, so this was the operating forecast. This slide will show you our one-time impacts. We are in 1819 using about 5 million of our reserves or one-time revenue. And you see our ending fund balance for 1819 is projected to be 31.5 million. We do maintain a fund balance all the way through 2324. But this next slide will show you how we will classify or how, how we project or propose to classify the reserves. So we are showing a 30% operating reserve through or up to 2122. We're setting aside liability reserves, capital replacement reserves, computer and sustainability reserves up through 1920. We cannot predict the future, so these reserves are important in order to help bridge that gap, especially if we get a big impact from law enforcement contract or our PERS. We try to anticipate the impacts going forward, but the reserves is an added, almost like an insurance policy.
And one thing that's not shown on here is the trust fund set up for PERS because that's set into an irrevocable trust fund that's separate from the general fund. However, if we get to a point where we need it, we can take that and utilize it instead of general fund monies.
And you can see even out to 2324, we are still showing about 18% operating reserve. So like I said, we, we see a positive outlook, but we're still cautious. This slide will just give you a overview or of what our general fund resources are. The general fund resources are 77.6 million. This includes all the ongoing revenues and also the one-time impacts from revenues. You can see that the largest piece of our revenues comes from property tax, then sales tax, and then the special revenue funds that fund like guest tax, Prop A, funds that fund transit and streets and streets department. Any questions on that? The expenditures we, including the budget, is 79 million dollars. You can see that the law enforcement contract, that 32%, is the largest piece of the pie or of our budget. That's just the contract. The next, Public Works is our next largest department or a part of the operating budget, the general fund operating budget. And then we have recreation and culture. And then general city is 11.5% and that represents mainly debt. This does not include capital expenditures that's paid out of the general fund or transfers out to the library. The next slide is just giving you an overview of the capital projects and what kinds of capital projects we're funding next year. As Jim said, we have 128.5 million in our 1819 budget and the majority of it is for street improvements or resurfacing, 81%. Now, this is a map trying to highlight the areas that some of these projects will be happening next year. I know it's hard to read. The light blue is the traffic. The dark blue is drainage. The mid-blue is parks, orange streets, green facilities, and pink is the utilities. I don't know how well you'd see your copy, but.
And again, I'm going to ask that when these maps are done, that our districts are put on them, please?
I have no idea. Which of these are in my district?
Oh, I do.
Well, you're over there.
They're in the west side.
Yeah.
This just, this slide will just let you know, overall, our expenditure budget for 1819 is 312 million dollars. This includes all budgets, including agency funds. And you can see that the first three categories, general fund, capital projects, and successor agency, represents 84% of our total 1819 budget.
Can we go back to the map, please? So the blue for parks, there are three blue dots on the east side. Two of those are vacant parcels of land designated for park use. Did I hear you say that this fees for parks on capital projects is going to be spent for next year?
This is for next year.
So the undeveloped parks will be developed?
No, it does not include undeveloped parks. I think I will have to probably refer this to Public Works when, when they are up here talking about their department. I mean, I can tell you what, what we titled those projects, but it may not answer the question.
Okay. So this is part, this is a breakdown.
I think Dominant Masari, some upgrades is included in that. Sam Yellen, there's some money budgeted in that. Lona Vista.
No, I thought it was Citywide, but I, I. No, I thought it was Citywide, but I get it now.
Oh, okay, yep. So now, Ann, she will begin the department budget. I will highlight part of our presentation.
Thanks, Karen. Can you flip from here? Mayor and members of the council, good evening. So it's my pleasure to present to you the proposed budget for administrative services. And just as a recap of what departments and divisions make up administrative services, this department includes finance, human resources, the city clerk's office, information technology, which is a contract department, emergency management, community programs, and volunteers. And our focus within our strategic plan is the, mostly the creation of a sustainable organization. We focus on quality services, the financial health of the city, to be able to do all this great programming that all the departments are doing, employee development, and internal communications. Safety, particularly in the area of emergency management, is one of our goals, and then community engagement, and this is where Trish and the volunteer program really is a key to these, to these efforts. So there's many things that we're proud of that we accomplished in this past year, or in the current fiscal year. So on the financial side, maintaining our strong bond ratings was, again, something we achieved this year, having a good audit report. Managing the billings, we've talked a little bit about just the volume of capital projects and the amount that those projects represent, and finance helps manage the billing and invoicing for over a hundred and thirty million dollars in grant activities, mainly through Public Works, some through some of the other departments. Finance helped the city obtain eleven point four million streetlight acquisition financing, which is a very big deal for us. One of the other key efforts that we've been making over the past year, and we keyed on this a little bit, was just enhancing our procurement efforts to, one, look at the achievement of the goals of always providing the best value and the best cost for the city, and increasing local participation, which is something we've clearly heard from the council. So some of the ways that staff have worked to achieve that is going on vendor visits. We've, our staff have gone out to the local auto dealerships. They've brought vendors here to the city to talk about programs that are kind of coming down the pike and getting their input on that. They've had pre-bid meetings, as we talked a little bit about, we're going to be working on results-driven contracting over the next year, and they're seeing the results of these efforts. So we're seeing bids coming in better, we're seeing more bidders submitting RFPs, and we're seeing more of our local bidders participating in the process, and so we're, we believe that we're on the right track. As Karen mentioned, implementation of the pension stabilization trust account was a very important measure that we believe will help the city sustain itself financially as PERS rates continue to rise. And then one of the other efforts that we will be implementing shortly is a fraud hotline. Currently, the city does have fraud policies that address if there's any concerns staff have about any fraudulent or misuse of funds. To add to that complement, we're also going to be establishing an anonymous hotline, so that if staff, if there was a staff member that felt they wanted to communicate something anonymously for investigation, that that will be established. So that's something else that finance has directed to be implemented this year. Additionally, as we talked about, the hiring of the emergency services coordinator. No one is happier to have Nazi on board than me. She's really hit the ground running to look at our plans, you know, start getting training set up for staff. We've been doing a lot of remodeling already in the EOC, and so there's going to be a lot of efforts coming in this coming year to address the training and exercising plan for the city. HR conducted forty recruitments over the past year, and so this was for the new positions that were hired last budget year, staff that have moved on to other opportunities. We've had some staff retire, and just sort of the regular rotation with all of the summer hires that Recreation does. And so it's been very busy for HR, and they've taken some really good steps to augment their recruitment strategies. They did a video to highlight why Palmdale is a great place to work, and we've got some really good feedback on that, are looking at different ways to outreach to potential candidates to showcase why this is a great employer, and why this is a great place to work, and why if you're in, you know, any kind of local government field and you really want to do that kind of work, that Palmdale is really the place to be for that. We will, before the end of this budget, before the end of this fiscal year, have completed the classification study for the bargaining unit positions, and this is something that we have been negotiating with them. Once we complete the classification portion, we will do the compensation side of that, but we can't do one without the other being completed, so we're hoping to have that completed by the end of this month. We've been proud to maintain very positive labor-management relations, being that we, having a union at the city is still fairly new for both us on management side and for employees. We have a great bargaining team. Our stewards do a fantastic job representing their employee group, and we've continued to have issues of meeting confer over the year, and those have all been very positive. One addition to the additional component of the unions is that the utilities group did join the union, and so we're meeting and confering over topics related to that. And then lastly, we've begun having a joint labor, labor-management committee to talk about issues and interests, or areas of, or of interest, and just this week, we'll have our second meeting of that committee. Other accomplishments, the city clerk's office completed the vault project, and this was a consolidation of records that are permanent records into the clerk's vault for better storage, and so that was something that was very important and for our permanent record, and that was accomplished. As you see where we're at, the city council upgrades are underway, and Public Works, Public Works IT, the city clerk's office, communications have all been working together to make sure that that project meets all of the council's needs and the other boards that use that chambers. Seasons of Service, again, continue to engage the public in both ongoing volunteer activities and special events where the public can come out and serve. And one of the things that Trish has done has been to develop an AV volunteer coordinators group, so all of those individuals who coordinate volunteers for their agencies can come together and collaborate with one another and support one another, and out of that has come, this is our third community volunteer resource fair. This time, just a few weeks ago, was done at the AV mall, and was tremendously successful and very positive. We do job development training and currently have provided that for fifty-one transitional subsidized employees participating in various city organizations, and then continue to do the summer lunch program. And last year, through the program, two, twenty thousand, fifty-two lunches were served throughout the summer, three hundred and four activity hours, and one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five hours of service. And then highlights for the coming year, technology investment. As was mentioned, part of our capital replacement is investment in technology. We've started the first phase of our computer refresh program. In this budget proposal is a large capital program for replacement of the switches in our, in our IT hardware. What we currently have in place is all beyond usable life, beyond being warranted, and this is technol, or the switches that kind of support all of our IT infrastructure, and failure, that would be a very bad thing for the, for the city and our operations. There's the development services software, TrackIt, which will do all, the permitting will be going live in hopefully July. We, at the June council meeting, will be bringing an agreement forward for the council for our new website development firm, and so that will be coming forward shortly, and we're very excited to begin work with them. And then maintenance and IT have been working on the asset management work order software that will be also implemented. We've, we've talked about the staffing that will be, that is proposed in the new budget. Also included in the budget is some, some increases in training opportunities for staff. Some of this is general budget and HR to provide citywide training. Others have been some augmentations within the department budgets to make sure that the staff are receiving the type of training and professional development that they need to do their jobs well. HR has been engaging in rebranding campaign for HR, again, to try to tell the story that Palmdale might not be the top place on your mind as a place to come to work, but we certainly are very proud of ourselves of an impact. This was a picture from Little Party for our colleague Bruce to tell him how much he's appreciated when he was going through some struggles earlier this year, and I think it just tells what type of a staff environment that we have when staff come together for someone who, anyone in the organization that's having a rough time. Finance, our, you know, highlights for the year is the maintenance of a thirty percent general fund operating reserve. Certainly, there are a lot of other cities that would be very challenged by coming anywhere close to this, and we're really proud that the council's leadership and staff's participation allows us to do this. This budget does have enhanced capital replacement reserves and addressed, really tried to address some of the real ongoing direct needs that the departments have to, to fund their operations. The staff is very good about not asking for things that are really not overly just directly necessary for operations, and this budget reflects movement towards meeting some of those goals, but certainly not everything. In this budget is funding in a proposal for a two percent COLA across the board for both the represented and non-represented employees. And then lastly, for highlights for finance, implementation of the fee study, doing a better job with performance metrics to show the impacts of some of the work that we're doing, especially in changing our contracting, rebidding different contracts, to show how we are being more efficient with our dollars, and to better show our local bidder outreach. And I'm trying to speed really fast. I know I'm talking a thousand miles an hour, but I'm feeling the pressure that we have a lot of staff. Also, they have a lot of good things to say, and we want to make sure there's time for the council to ask any questions as well. And emergency management, again, having a full-time person is wonderful. Nazi has been working on setting up our EOC so that it's constantly in a readiness state, and not something that we have to pull out of a box and set up if the time comes. We've, just this week, we had staff down in Calabasas for logistics training, and there will be ongoing training identified for staff. We will, as we get staff more back into the mindset of emergency management, what their roles, all will begin starting exercising in this coming year. And then just continuing our networking with area emergency management staff and outreach to the community to make sure that not only are we prepared to respond to our community in need, but that our, our community members themselves are ready to be able to withstand and be resilient to those, those bad days that, that sometimes come.
When, when that training is being conducted as public figures, people come to us in the emergencies also, and so I'd like to make sure that you include council in that emergency training so that we know what our roles are and what we can do to help in a crisis.
Absolutely. And there's some, there's some training, too, that I can send over to the council. There's some free FEMA training that specifically discusses the role of council members in this process, but absolutely, that's essential for, for all of us to work, for all of us to know what we're doing. Community programs, as I said, a lot of our work focuses on support and administrative functions, but community programs helps us connect not only internally to other departments, but to our community. And so we're proud to say that we'll be conducting our twelfth Partners Academy this coming year. This program has been so well-received by the community, and I think really speaks to the city's transparency in our operations, that community members can sign up to spend eight weeks with us to find out all about what the government does, and no question is shied away from, and we've had tremendous feedback, and what we've seen in the last few years is just a real changing vibe from the community. People that are really excited to be here in Palmdale, that are newer to our community, that love this community, that, you know, just can't believe that this has been this hidden gem, and we're just seeing more and more of that kind of energy, and so it really is encouraging to see that movement in our community.
You know, those same graduates, I think, are hungry for more.
Absolutely.
We could find a next step might be something to consider.
And I think, as we talked about tonight, opportunities for different committees, certainly work coming up on the general plan. There's, I think, going to be many opportunities to continue finding ways to take those people that are already engaged and even engage them further in meaningful ways, so that certainly is on the radar for the coming year. Nonprofit Boot Camp is, is a new program that Trish has been leading up. She's been having conversations with the Center for Nonprofit Management to talk about how we can help increase the capacity of local nonprofits. And I think this is an area where I think Trish and probably council members and other staff certainly see people coming through the door that have a great idea or see a need and want to start a nonprofit, and don't necessarily think through all that that means. And so how can we help those individuals that have a passion and see a need to build the right business plan and build the right capacity to actually serve and fulfill that need? So we're hopeful to be able to put something together during this year to help start, start that process. Volunteer replacements will continue, as well as the summer lunch program. We have continued funding carried over from last year that we'll fund that again this year. And then we will continue our work on, that we've started with What Works Cities, to create and develop an open data platform and continue our open data efforts and engagement with the public. And this will come in a variety of different ways, so that, those are all sort of neat group highlights.
On that, on that summer lunch program?
Yes.
Are we making sure that we budget in a maintenance factor for that? Because we've been, we've all been to, like, McAdam, where they're doing that, and your shoes will stick and fall off from the stuff that gets dropped there from the kids, and I think that's a valuable program. We need to make sure that at, when the lunch is over and the rest of the park users come in, that it's usable for them, because those, those areas get pretty beat up, you know, so.
We'll be at seven sites for the summer lunch, five activity sites, and have planned two-hundred-and-eighty-five activity hours for this year. And then.
Couple hours with a, with a power washer would be wonderful.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's included. Looking at Trish, Trish is nodding. Maintenance is nodding.
Power washing one-on-one, okay.
And then lastly, highlights from the city clerk's office. You mayor may not have heard that there's an election this year, so Becky and her staff will be busy this year, working with the county to conduct an election for the position of mayor and for council members in districts three and four. Implementing the electronic agenda management system. This, this actually is probably something that will be moved up a little bit in the priority, because it's something we're going to need to do as part of the council chamber upgrade, and so this will allow us, you know, to have the council have electronic versions of the council agendas that you can mark up on your own. It will give us the electronic voting and everything that will be tied into the system that Becky uses to manage the meetings, manage the minutes, et cetera. So that will all be part of the overall council chamber project. Implementation of electronic filing of Form 700s, this is something currently we don't have, to be able to file those electric, electronically for staff and for their council. So this will be implemented in, in the coming year. And then also, the clerk's office has been very instrumental in the planning and implementation of the annual Sister Cities reception, and so this year, they'll be coordinating the forty-fourth annual Sister Cities reception. And that is it for administrative services. Are there any questions?
Yep.
With that, then, if there's no questions, we'll move on and invite Mark Euler, our director of economic and community development, to talk about all the great things.
Hello. Well, the department had another great year, and this is kind of a reminder of organizational structure. The department is comprised of three major divisions, which include economic development, planning, and building and safety. The combination of these three divisions allows the department staff to guide and assist developers and landowners and residents through the development process from inception all the way to final inspection and completion. The organizational structure has been very successful these last two years, and we're really looking forward to another successful year. The goal of the department is always to provide the highest quality of services, create a sustainable economy through diversification of the economic base and fostering growth in our industry clusters, to continue to revitalize the city's retail environment with a continued focus on the east side of Palmdale. Streamlining regulatory processes to obtain efficiencies while at the same time maintaining and enhancing community standards. You. To develop and enhance all the necessary infrastructure through the development process to ensure sustainability and a robust economy and improved quality of life in the future. We had several accomplishments last year. Welcome to the Element Hotel by Weston, which provides a modern, relaxed feel and encourages renewal through a nature-influenced environment. Next slide.
Go to the key.
Department staff assisted home-to-suites by Hilton pass their final inspection. The stylish Hall Suites Hotel is pet-friendly and has focused on sustainable green practices. The much-anticipated Antelope Valley College Palmdale Center opened for classes in the fall, and we've already seen significant positive economic impact in that immediate Building and safety, planning, and economic development worked hard to manage significant development activity through the first full year. Hobby Lobby, Platts, and Stoller Street, they all opened to large numbers of waiting customers. And I will add that there was significant work on staff's part to assist these developments in getting open. There were many, many problems with all of these, but we worked through and got one. The Home Goods and Five Below opened to record crowds. Home Goods reported that they couldn't, could not keep the shelf stock fast enough for their new customers.
There's their best opening.
Yeah.
Their best opening.
And, and we have heard this repeatedly, when new retailers come to Palmdale, they are blown away because they have their biggest record opening even across the whole nation. So that's, that's a real feather in the cap for their residents in Palmdale. Channing Outdoors, Men, Two Chicken and Waffle Houses, the Unique Imagine City, Mental Health America, Starbucks, and many, many other businesses opened their doors and chose Palmdale as their place to call home. Highlights for the coming year, the year ahead, we will be working with Palmdale Aerospace Academy to expand their operations to include an elementary school and athletic fields. We will continue working with several housing developments, including Ritter Ranch, Quail Valley, and Falcon Glen. These are all significant, large projects.
What was Falcon Glen?
Falcon Glen is out off of S, on the west side of the 14th Freeway, southwest.
Okay.
In the next fiscal year, we're looking forward to completion of the transit area specific plan. We will continue working with both Express West, California High Speed Rail. We're working with two and possibly three new hotels, and no, I can't say who they are. And of course, we will be responding to major expansions with both Lockheed Martin and Norfolk Grumman. So folks, stay tuned, pass any seat belts, and get ready for a real exciting year in the Department of Economic and Community Development.
Oh, questions?
Question?
Good job.
Oh, good job.
There's a certain restaurant that we are meeting with at ICSC.
You can't say who it is.
They have lots of gravy.
Oh, boy!
Hey, almost a word.
Oh, I know. I will say a word. I'm not going to jeopardize my, my dream come true.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll invite Mike Miller up to talk to us about neighborhood services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and House and Authority Board members. The Neighborhood Services Department covers a number of areas here within the city with housing, code enforcement, neighborhood compliance officers, crime prevention, fellow security officers, community safety officers, SAVs, community programs, law enforcement, healthcare, and control contract management. And the bottom line is that we work every day very hard as a team with the rest of our city partners to preserve and revitalize our neighborhoods, create better opportunities for community engagement, and to increase the safety within our community. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Captain Dennis here and let him talk about our work with the station.
All right. Thank you, Mike. City Council, thank you for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure to speak about some of our accomplishments and then also some of our goals. So as we look back at our accomplishments last year, we continued a downward trend, and that was after a historically low year in our crime rate. And when you look at it, it's really a teamwork effort. It's our deputies, it's our city staff, I couldn't ask for our partner and Mike Miller and Jim Purty and the support of our elected officials. And it really makes a difference because last year, we were down 2.67% after a historically low year, and that was 210 Part 1 crimes per 10,000. And a Part 1 crime, the most serious, is a homicide, and then we have rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, larceny thefts, burglaries, grand theft autos, and arson. So those are our Part 1 crimes. And again, we saw a historically low level. So that trend has continued even into 2018, which is really positive.
We gonna break 200?
I hope so. We were at 210 last year, and, and I think it's possible. I really do. I, I do, because year-to-date, we're down as of this morning, and it's preliminary, but year-to-date, we're down 13% in the city of Palmdale. And it's, it's not by chance, it's really the community, it's the hard work and efforts from our city staff, and, and I see it every day, I see it firsthand in the work of your staff as well as our deputies and our community, especially our volunteers. So I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along. So next up is our Partners Against Crime Program. These are our team of deputies, and I have a lieutenant assigned along with two sergeants and a full team of deputies. And what they do is they work in collaboration with the city staff, and they train these property owners, these landlords, on how to properly manage that facility, that apartment complex. And we've done studies that reveal when you are PAC certified, when you have gone through the training of our PAC deputies along with our city staff, there is a much lower crime rate in those PAC certified apartments. For example, we found that when you evaluate 20 apartment units during a full-year period from 2016 to 2017, there were 16 crime reports for every 20 apartment units that were not PAC certified, but there were only three, there were only three for those apartment complexes that were PAC certified. And these apartment complexes were in the same exact area. And so when you get your landlords involved, when you get the residents involved in their work and with city staff and law enforcement, we see the difference firsthand, and we see it when we evaluate the results through the surveys and the studies that we've conducted. Our PAC team, again, is doing outstanding work of significance. They handled an investigation last year, which resulted in a search warrant operation and the recovery of 47 firearms, 47 firearms, and some of those firearms were assault rifles. And I'm glad to say the suspect is still in custody pending trial. And so again, our PAC deputies were hand-in-hand with our city staff, and they're making an impact, not only in quality of life issues, but in our crime rate. We've continued our collaboration with our volunteer programs. At a Palmdale station, we have 145 station volunteers, and that includes our explorers, our reserve deputies, our mounted enforcement detail, our volunteers on patrol. These are community stakeholders that contributed over 39,000 hours, 39,000 man-hours last year alone. And you really can't put a price tag on that, but what I can tell you is that we can't accomplish our mission without the collaboration of community volunteers. And so we see that. Implementation of additional ALPER-equipped units. The ALPER is the automated license plate reader. Last year, the city leased two additional ALPER units, so that brought us up to five ALPER units. And just in the last 90 days alone, the ALPER-equipped units have hit on over 40 arrests based on the license plate recognition system, and in addition to that, they've also identified seven, just in the last 90 days, seven stolen cars. So rolling, stonens is what we call them, where we're making arrests, and that's based on these ALPER units. And again, the city leased two additional ALPER units last year at a cost of, I believe, 4,400 for each unit. So I think it was money well spent. We're mentoring future leaders through the Explorer Program. Just last month alone, our Explorer posts at the Palmdale Sheriff's Station, they held a competition at College of the Canyons in Valencia. And they had Explorer posts from not only California, but from Arizona and Nevada. And it was pretty interesting to see these kids and the collaboration and the camaraderie and the teamwork. And again, we mentor these explorers, and we recruit many of those explorers. Some will go on to other professions, but many times we're able to recruit them as our next generation of deputy sheriffs. We've improved our community outreach efforts. Last year, we had 129 community outreach events. This includes Coffee with a Cop, this includes our CAC Town Hall meetings, and many other community events. In total, over 96% of our deputies, so almost every deputy at the station except a few that are newly assigned, attended a community outreach event last year. And I think it's positive when our deputies are able to meet other community members in a lower-stress environment, where they're able to just engage and it's not a stressful event that has occurred. It's more of a low-key event such as Coffee with a Cop or a Town Hall meeting, and it's positive for our deputies.
Good and great turnout, by the way.
Yes, sir, we are, we are. We get some good turnout at some of the Coffee with a Cop events.
Lots of deputies, too.
Yes, yes. Implementation of the Palmdale Station's robbery suppression team. I'll talk about that for a few minutes. Last year in April, I saw a very troubling trend. We were up 33% year-to-date last year in comparison to 2016 in terms of our robberies. And so I wanted to work with my detective bureau and make an impact. And what we did is we formed a team that consists of a sergeant, three detectives, and then two patrol deputies assigned to the robbery suppression team. So that when a robbery occurs, traditionally, we would have a deputy sheriff in a black and white go out to that location, take the report, and it could be days until it would hit the detective's desk. Now, we have two deputies who work two separate black and whites, and they respond when a robbery occurs. Last year, we had 220 in the city, to give you an idea of numbers. Those deputies respond, and they begin an immediate investigation. That could include calling out the crime lab, that could include calling out a detective, that could include doing an immediate follow-up, which results in a search warrant operation. And so what we saw is we ended last year down versus 2016. And again, we were up, we were up at the end of April. We ended the year down 2.4%, and as of this morning, we're down 34% year-to-date. And so we're seeing the results of really putting together a strategy that involves technology. We're using technology such as DNA, we're using GPS tractor, trackers, we're doing much more search warrant operations so that we can bring the perpetrators to justice before they commit additional acts of violence on our community members. And it's been positive. So we want to target a 3% decrease in overall Part 1 crimes. And again, we're, we're on track. We're seeing that continual positive trend where we're down 13% year-to-date in the city of Palmdale. We're down overall, when you look at city and county, 11% year-to-date. So it's, it's been a positive trend thus far year-to-date, and I think as long as we continue our efforts in working with the city staff and also with community stakeholders, I think we can reach that goal. Of importance to me is pursuing an additional crime analyst position. We have one crime analyst assigned at the Palmdale Sheriff's Station, and we serve an area that covers 770 square miles and over 210,000 residents. We do a lot of search warrant operations, we do a lot of probation sweeps, parole sweeps, I could go on and on, but the bottom line is our one and only crime analyst assists in all of these operations. And she does that along with the assistance of some volunteers, but it's not enough. We need a second crime analyst due to the size and scope of what we do at the Palmdale Sheriff's Station.
Can't we just work her harder?
She's working, she's working hard. She's working hard.
Get room for one more job.
But I think with a second crime analyst, that's going to aid us in our crime-fighting efforts in keeping the community safe. And so with that, just again, another recap is we're down last year almost 3%. Year-to-date, we're actually down 13% in the city as of this morning, and we want to continue that positive trend, and I think we can do that, but it's not going to be easy. And I think what will make an impact and it will be money well spent is having that additional crime analyst. Any questions at me?
Good job.
I think you guys have been doing a great job keeping the city safe.
Thank you, thank you. And we couldn't do it without your, without your cooperation and support, so thank you very much.
So just so you know, too, I don't know if you were here, we're talking about it, but contract law was saying that the majority of the applicants that are coming in right now are coming from up here, and we are, we told them, we've got facilities like this where we offered that at no charge for the sheriff's department to come in and...
Yeah, I heard you earlier, and I'm going to contact our personnel administration tomorrow morning and just follow up on that to let them know that you have...
Sergeant John, it was not Mitchell, it was the other guy over there, works for Russo.
Okay. Yeah, I'll follow up on that tomorrow morning, Steve, because I think it is important. We do have, we're, we're increasing our recruitment staff and our efforts, and that's the most important key right now, especially with Sheriff Jim McDonnell, is recruitment and retention. And so we've got, we've got some activity in the works right now. Thank you.
So I've got to step in as moderator right now and remind people that we have 30 minutes left. So use your time wisely. Make sure that we do get to recalculation, which is short straw, and this is the last on the, on the list. But as you can see, a lot of accomplishments, a lot of new plans for next year in a very exciting time in Palmdale.
So I'll just cook right through this. This is the fun time of the year for me to kind of go through the great numbers that our staff has, has done. And as Captain said, intelligent-led policing is very important, so we do gear the department to those crime numbers and the detail in those reports, and we know where to steer some of that information. So in that area, Carrie and Ruth in our crime-fighting team here in the Neighborhood Services Department, they do a lot of outreach through Facebook, and I think there are over 1,300 followers right now, and they're looking to double that for next year. Code enforcement team has been out working with the county's health department, doing a great job out in that area. Our rehab work, so I'm just going to go down the list really quick. This past year, Ruth and Carrie produced 35 outreach videos, and we attest that to a lot of the reduction in crime because they're getting out there, they have anywhere from 300 to 2,400, 4,000 views for each video that they produce. As the captain said, we had a great reduction in crime, we'll keep pushing that area. This year, we started construction on Course on Arts Colony. We docked down the pool. The pool is, is getting ready to be reconstructed now. We're hoping to have the Course on Arts Colony done in the upcoming year. The department has 16 outreach events that we coordinated with community partners. We did extensive homeless outreach this year to where we interviewed 188 homeless people within our community. We'll be using that information to bring forward our homeless plan. Our PAC program is really the crime-free multifamily element of that program is taken off Monica Luna, who is now in our department, has taken that, put brand-new life into it. She's out engaging with our multifamily properties, and we've had record, we've had two record landlord training sessions where the room has just been packed, and our deputies do a great job of working with us on that. SAVs has delivered just nearly 1 million pounds of food to our community this year, and we have acquired the post office, we closed escrow the other week, so we'll be getting construction on that in the new coming year so that home, SAVs has a larger new home that they can go to. And some of the highlights moving into next year, though, if we can just move to that, is really to do more outreach through social media. Carrie and Ruth do a great job. We grab the captain every month, we grab, working on the rehab of our facility. So thank you. So thank you.
Great. So I did that three minutes. Not going to set the bar for anybody else.
Jim, two things real quickly. The, one of the things that I've noticed is Ruth and Kerry have really taken their, their scope and expanded it. They've had a lot of real positive feedback from people on, with some of their public safety training programs, their senior training, their merchant training programs and things like that. And the, and they did a survivability thing to, you know, surviving an earthquake or disaster. I just think that that unit ought to be changed from crime prevention to public safety. I think that covers and better describes the scope of what they're doing, and I think has a, has a more positive face to the community where the public safety people, not the crime prevention, you know what I'm saying?
Put a positive spin on it.
Yeah, I think puts a positive spin on it, you know, so...
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. Whatever we can do to get that message out, and certainly, this is just the tip of the iceberg on our engagement activities. We'll really be pushing communications this next year, especially with the...
Well, again, their role has really, you know, expanded quite a bit, and it's really impressive when you look at, at the variety of things that they're doing out there. I just think that this, you know, much more positively and accurately describes their scope, so thank you.
I have a comment or a request. Is it possible to start looking at a neighborhood house over on the east side? I know we have the ABPH on the agenda for later tonight, but that's something that I think that we could utilize on the east side, and having ABPH on board now, they may be interested in expanding their services over to the east side. If not, it'd be feasible to have a neighborhood house, maybe look at building something on Dominique Masari or a Jalen Park to facilitate a building for them to provide some of those services on that side of town. Is that something you could look at?
I think we can take a look at that. I think with home prices coming up, I think it becomes a bigger hurdle for us. You know, potentially a storefront even, could be a, a drop-in center, could be a possibility. So I think we'll take a look at that. I think it's, was originally derived doing these focused neighborhoods, and now with looking at the general plan and kind of the studies we're going to be doing, maybe there's some new focused neighborhoods that we need to, to develop, and I think that will be part of it.
Yeah, if you look at a commercial location, you know, the shopping center on Forty-Seventh and N., is that two-story building where the McDonald's is and the Starbucks? They may be having a hard time getting a tenant out there because of the way that we build. Maybe that's a principal location. Again, the other, the other possibility I was thinking of is maybe something on seed property like Dominique Masari. I know there's a building in Dominique Masari, but is it not big enough in Session Center? I think it is.
Right.
But that's not big enough for them to be able to provide some of their services. There, too, yeah. So if you can take a look at that.
Okay. We look at, it will be kind of extended programming of education and also finding facilities around the east side.
Okay. Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council and Commissioners. I'm extremely proud to be here tonight and representing the roughly one-hundred-and-ten Public Works employees that do all the things you see up there on the screen. The, the variety and the significant responsibility each one of those holds is, it's, it's a, it's a badge of honor for every one of the people that serve on this, in this department. Yeah, we talked about, the next one. We talked about the, some of the accomplishments. First of all, the, the eighteen-thousand streetlights that we recently purchased. Later tonight, we'll talk about the, some of the items that are required to perfect that and put those into service, but that will now be taken over by our city's traffic division, significant responsibility. The Capital Projects Division, as we heard earlier tonight, capital budget of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight million. It's a pretty, it's a pretty incredible number. You might say that a lot of that construction goes off in the future years. However, every, every one of those dollars in that budget is now being managed by a project manager, and they take it very seriously because it is something that, it will be a significant asset for the city at, at some point in the future. So they watch those projects, they watch those dollars, they watch the, what the effect is on the city very closely, even though the construction is a little ways off. So I'm going to try to skip ahead just a little bit. The, obviously, the streetlights, again, is, is now going to be under our maintenance. The installation of traffic signals, we had traffic signals installed in the Anavarti Development over the course of the year, and then another one, Technology and Trade Center Drive. Go ahead. Our, our, no, that's good. Our sewer division, it's, you know, it's one of those things that you just, it's kind of unseen. We had...
I would hope so.
Yeah, that's right. And the, this first item here is extremely important for us to be looking at those sewers and making sure that we don't have any lines that could create an overflow. Knock on wood, we haven't had an overflow in a long time. Bruce could tell you the exact number, but the state looks at those numbers and they go, you guys are, you guys got to be lying, and we aren't. And so we've got to be careful about how we represent that and that we always, paperwork's all there, but the sewer's doing a great job, and they're, they're young, sunned heroes in a lot of cases. Again, the installation of charging stations, again, that's just, it's one of those things we're going to continue to do, try to find opportunities to install those charging stations at the, at the Transit Center, and then we have some at Development Services. And then I'll just hit a couple of these. The Ranch Obvious Villard and Palmdale Median Reservations, those are on the landscape side, the, you know, at, at the Palmdale Amphitheater and the Legacy Commons, painting of the interior. Again, trying to stay up on top of a lot of the, a lot of the upkeep of the facilities. We had landscape district renovations. These were all done by our in-house staff, significant number. You might go around town and you can see them in a lot of cases. Did a great job. And then one of the things that have been a point of the, well, around about Fiftieth Street, Forty-seventh Street, it hasn't looked real good. We've now got the permits. We've been working with Caltrans. We now have the permits to go in and do, add some rock in there, make it look, dress it up a little bit, and that should happen in June. So that's, that's going to be a nice accomplishment to get that thing looking well, looking nice. And then we have, we're going to be working on a public art feature there, working with Rec and Culture to bring that forward and the Arts Committee. And then the legal dumping, you see, one of the items on, in the budget is what's called a, I guess it's called a lightning loader, and I think we got a picture of it a little bit later on. Let's see, maybe, I mean, it's our GIS, we've got one guy doing GIS. Amazing. And this is something that Jim and I talked about even during my interview, and that is trying to make sure we're backfilling these folks. I mean, hopefully Jim won't go anywhere, but we really need to make sure that somebody is there and is going to be ready to backfill, and he's getting that proper training. And that's, that's going to be extremely important on a lot of our positions right now. So we're keeping an eye on that all the time. Okay. Let's see, where are we? Yeah, and I'm sure you're aware of the TOD, the Environmental Lit PAC report that's working with the community development. Coordination of High-Speed Rail continues to be, take a lot of time and continuing to spend a lot of time on that. Okay, go ahead. Okay, we've talked about the streetlights and, let's see, electrical upgrades to IT server room. I think that's something, obviously, we're working with Admin Services, and that is something that was a good, a very big accomplishment. Public Arts Program, again, we're working with and supporting the Rec and Culture Department on that. Public Works Software Upgrade, this is something that is absolutely necessary when we talk about the accountability when it comes to our contractors, particularly landscape, that are out in the field. This, this software is, this track-it software is going to be something we'll be able to use to help keep those contractors accountable going forward. So we get this in place, get the iPads in the hands of the people that are out in the field doing that oversight, and we're anticipating it's going to go a lot better. McCannum Park restroom upgrade, this, I think this is one of the projects, Mayor Pro Tem, that you were asking about what these, some of the parks' upgrades were going to be. A lot of maintenance, not, not necessarily, you know, it's maintain what we have, so that, this is really just one of those things. And then the Pear Blossom Highway...
Can you begin to, Andy, help us out at the Artic Park?
Well, we'll look into that.
All right.
Yeah? Okay, and then our Pear Blossom Highway program, the reconstruction, that's a huge program that's, that's going to have a huge, a huge impact on the city when that thing starts construction. It's going to drive a lot of traffic probably into the city, some, maybe other places. Okay, let's go to the next page. Next page.
Next one.
Okay. Some other, some other programs that, that we continue to monitor, we're going to be able to, our maintenance folks are going to be able to continue getting back in and working on our raised pavement bark installation program, the crack seal. These are things that we're hoping to, with two of the positions that we're requesting, that these are really going to be something that we can get after some of the maintenance on the streets and prevent early decay of the streets by the, the crack seal and then some of the paving programs that we've got going on this summer. Continued sports field renovation program, obviously, you've probably been out to Masari and seen the, you know, the fences that we've got around. It's really worked. The grass is coming back. It's really starting, so we're going to alternate fields so that we're always trying to bring those fields back and renovate them. Maintenance is doing a great job on that. And then we've got a backup pump in the Avenue Q Basin. I think I'd be remiss from not mentioning the Upper Amargosa Creek project that has been a significant project over the years. We've now got a, a project manager that was actually replaced, and he came the same day I did, and he's really forcing the issue with State DWR. They had us kind of going a different direction, and so we've got that handled now, and we're really pushing it forward, hoping to start construction this, late this summer. And we'll be in the, in the aqueduct creating a cofferdam, and then there's the actual turnout to take water would be next spring. So that's it. Oh, and this is a picture of the quote-unquote "the lightning loader." So I didn't know what it was, so I had to Google it.
Actually, I've got two areas I'd like to do quickly.
Yeah.
I'd like us to consider this year some kind of a pride effort in our neighborhoods. Don't know what it is, but I'd, I'd like to get our city inspired on cleaning up and taking pride in property. And I'd like to find a way to minimize the illegal dumping to begin with, much less being able to pick it up quicker. But another, maybe the same program, I don't know, but a way to reduce the amount of illegal dumping in a city where trash is required by every single house. I don't, I don't understand how we can get all this illegal dumping when you have that kind of a mandate.
I think when you look at, look at some of it, a lot of times, it's your bargain basement, low-bid cleanup crew, and that's why they weren't able to bid it so low.
Well, I'd like to get to the bottom of that.
They just dump it, you know?
Yeah. There's, there's something I'm talking to Waste Management, I brought it up the other day ago, because a couple of residents addressed the issue with me, and for those of you who don't know, that the dumps actually close all day Sunday, and it's only open for half-day or till noon on Saturday. So a lot of those people that work nine-to-five, yeah, they can't get to it. So basically, our dump is, they work on banker's hours in a sense, like everybody else. So I think sometimes some residents have a hard time getting out there during the weekend, especially if you have to load everything up on Saturday morning. By the time you get there in the afternoon, they're already closed.
Well, whatever we, we consider, we didn't include all of the above.
So I've opened up the discussion with Waste Management.
I think, too, we need to get that ninety-four pride number out there better. When you bring that up to people, they say, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. But if, you know, maybe dial in the services that are available on there a little better and, and just get that out. I mean, that should be on everything we put out there. It should be, it should be on, you know, banners, flyers, it should be out there at the amphitheater when there's an event. There should be signs when you come into, like, the water park and places like that, just to remind people that here's where you call if you have a problem with anything. Quality-like problems, call this number, and somebody will get back to you, so...
Agreed. I think we're talking about all the same, all of the above. All right, good job.
We save the best for last, Recreation and Culture. So, bye, Kerry. I'm sure you can talk back to her.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm here to represent the Department of Fun and Excitement, and it's my honor to do so. As I, I wanted to first mention, this is a resumé of all of the facilities and services that we proudly offer to our community. I think we have a lot to be proud of here in Palmdale. A couple of little things that came to mind here recently, our public art survey that you all are aware of online. One of the questions asked was, what makes Palmdale unique? And our recreation facilities fell within the top five of all the answers we received from seven-hundred surveys. So that really speaks to the value of these facilities and how they contribute to our public safety and our quality of life here in Palmdale. So accomplishments, I have a few accomplishments for you to, to call to attention. Our, our parks are bustling with activity at Oak Dominique Masari and Ray Kerr. Those are our two busiest parks, and we're hosting free events out there for the community, one of them being Old Fashioned Field Days with bunny sack races and tug-of-war and those kinds of things. We will be extending park hours this summer, not only being there in the afternoon and evening, but also will include a morning shift if they're, were available for walkers and those are using those two parks early in the morning. Hashtag Rock the Art has become a pretty popular program. We're encouraging park users to decorate rocks and place cheer for, cheer for, cheer...
Cheerful.
Cheerful, thank you. Messages on them and hide them throughout the parks, and that's really been a good program for us. Yappy Hour is a social gathering for our users of our dog park. That's working out really well. A lot of those gatherings are encouraging users to bring items that we can donate to the animal shelters, so that's been nice. We're adding Twilight Tours at the Air Park this year, the third Thursday of the month between May and August, so look for those. We had a group of pickleball players that wanted to rent the pickleball courts, the recently converted courts at McCannum, and hosted a tournament. They raised two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars and donated that money to the PCF. We in turn used those funds to purchase slats to provide additional wind protection for the pickleball courts, so that turned out really well. As mentioned before, the soccer fields at Dominique Masari are turning out awesome, and we're going to continue those upwards year-round and see what we can do to improve the playing conditions for our soccer fields. Let's see where, oh, grants. We have, we have a couple of things in the works. As you know, we were awarded fifteen-thousand dollars from L.A. Ford to replace the scoreboard inside the Oasis Gymnasium. It was just recently installed. We're back in business there in the gymnasium. We also received some county funding to help put towards some playground improvements and also shade structures for Younger Park, which will be on the agenda later this evening. And our land and water conservation grant application that was turned in for the basketball court relocation at Dominique Masari, a grant representative did come out to the park and did have a lot of favorable things to say about the project, so we're optimistic that that will be something they'd like to fund. We will find out the, the middle part of June if our project is awarded. And also, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx myself, but there's a, a bit of factor that might be interested in donating some money to the project as well, so give it a shot. What's that?
Future Laker.
Our public park master plan, we've, we've spent the last several months really working on our public engagement. We've distributed about two-hundred-and-fifty surveys at Kwaitoscope this last fall. We've collected almost eight-hundred-and-forty surveys online. We've held two general community meetings. The consultants have held several one-on-one interviews. We're holding an artist-only meeting on May twelfth at the Amity Valley College campus here in Palmdale. And then the digital design kits from Peak Night assisted us in an art lab activity which was showcased in four locations throughout the city. We have a new exclusive beverage agreement moving forward beginning July. That agreement will continue over ten years, and the cumulative value is, is more than three-hundred thousand dollars. So we're really excited about that opportunity and bringing in some additional sponsorship revenue from the previous agreement.
Who's that with?
Have seats. Oops. Have seats.
Oops. You were doing so good.
I cry, I can't, I can't load them all. Okay, the library collection has expanded, you know, we are, we are sharing our collection with almost 60 other libraries within the LSNS network, it's a really inexpensive program for us, and a program that our residents are taking advantage of. In the last six months, our residents have checked out more than 6,000 items from other libraries, so it's really expanded our materials that are available. We've been able to keep the C-140 Jetstar, it was on loan list from NASA, we put in our, our application to keep that at our park, and I think because we take such great care of our aircraft, it was awarded for us to keep it, and so we're excited to keep that as a part of our collection. The Playhouse, we expect to sell more than 7,000 tickets to Playhouse events by the end of the fiscal year. Our Split the Box program is taking off very well. If we're not paying the artists to provide a show, we're just letting the take at the box office, if you will. We offered an R&B, jazz, and Motown performances with great success this last year. Kaleidoscope, we added a few new components, brushes and brews, we had an instructor-led acrylic painting class, we also added a noteworthy art, which was music notes that we encourage attendees to write messages on with regard to how they feel about art and music, and we posted them on a, on a music note sheet as an additional element of the event. We had chalk art, and our art light exhibit was for our novice and student artists to display their art. And moving into Legacy Commons, we cannot keep those folks down, they added another event for themselves. This last February, they held a love and friendship celebration, and last May, they held a Mother's Day tea, which was really nice in the courtyard. We have, we're always adding classes through our contract service program. One I wanted to mention was our Spanish immersion class, it's at Oasis Recreation Center, it's for toddlers, and they're teaching Spanish through storytime games and music. And then our Art Round Studio is offering art classes at Legacy Commons for kids 6 to 14. Drytown continues to do very well, we're at 98% cost recovery, which our intention with that park was to recover our direct costs. Our store sales were up 21% because we're selling goodies in there, snack items and things that the kids are enjoying, and we redeemed about 1,500 coupons, we're going to continue that effort this year, and we redeemed 8,000 discounted Twilight tickets as well.
You getting a grip on the shoplifting problem over there?
We've met with.
Did I notice all the, all the shelves last time I was over there, everything was empty, and there was only a handful of stuff behind there.
Yes. We've met with Kerry German, and we're going to implement a few suggestions without getting to, I want to.
No, no, I get it.
Let's see. Moving forward, so, ta-da, next year, we'll be adding the Freedom Concert and Fireworks, as Jim mentioned earlier. It'll be a custom fireworks show provided by Fire Engineering, they're a great company, they've been out and looked at the site, and they're going to provide us a great show that works with Disney and the national musicians throughout the country. Our band that night will be the Alocats and Soul City Band. And then at the Best of the West softball complex, we're hosting our first World Series for the southwestern division of the National Softball Association, and they'll be bringing 700 teams to that event. We have a new menu at Drytown this year, we went out to bid, and we selected a new vendor, so we're bringing back favorites such as burgers, fries, chicken tenders, karaoke bowls, burritos, tacos, those kinds of things, so we're excited to spice that up and add some new selections there. We're also adding Splash Theater to Drytown, so three Thursdays in July, we'll be projecting a movie on the center tower inside the park, and so we think that's going to be a nice element for the summer. And for that event, we will offer a $4 moviegoer-only ticket.
You're going to show jaws, aren't you?
We'll be adding Wi-Fi, we'll be adding Wi-Fi to the Playhouse, so hopefully that will boost social media posts by attendees and help us market our events there at the Playhouse, and it will also allow us to update our digital equipment wireless, please. And finally, as Mike mentioned earlier, Course on Pool, we're gearing up to Okinawa in summer of 2019, spring somewhere in there. We'll be offering services year-round with additional services in the summer, so we're excited about that. We're also going to be hosting a volunteer service day at Course on Park this fall and spring, we're still working out the details, but we're going to do some small medification projects, so as we open the pool, the park has a little bit of a new face as well. New coming up at the Playhouse this year, we are adding travel logs this summer, we're adding an interactive murder mystery show in the fall, and we're also adding a holiday benefit concert to support the Playhouse in December. At Kaleidoscope, a few new elements we are adding this year, local art and music events that are held anywhere in the community, the first week of October can apply to be published in our Art à la Cart brochure, we're wanting to connect our event to other events in the community and celebrate arts during that month. We are also adding, Animal Valley Union High School District is providing instructors and students, they'll be onsite, and they will allow kids to create art through recycled items, so we're excited about that. Wine will be available in addition to the beer this year, and we are also making our top art 3D by providing it on freestanding canvases that we can keep. And then we're going to continue to work with Townsend on grant applications and see what we can do to drum them up some additional dollars.
Very good.
Don't forget the orchestra that's going to Europe, and its concerts help to provide that.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's important to support the concerts at the Playhouse, those are great kids, and they do a really wonderful job, yes.
Any other questions?
Are you making any progress towards adding more parks in there?
Uh, here we go.
Just rolling the dice on that.
Because I think it just, I think, again, it projects the scope of what's going on over there, so.
All right. Well, I think we're set to adjourn, unless there's other questions. All right, we're going to adjourn our budget workshop, and we're going to call to order in about four minutes.